I guess we can still do the pledge, right?
Yep.
Well, I hate to not do it. We don't have a flag, but let's do it anyway, okay? I pledge of allegiance. Do the flag. To the Republic.
Republic.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Liberty. Justice for all. Awesome.
Nice belly picture, Patrick. Nice belly picture.
All of you.
Thank you.
I. Okay. Announcements. Announcements, let's see. Let's start with, how about Alan?
Everything is closed and shut down.
All right. Next, anybody else have any announcements?
No, sir.
No.
All right, no announcements. Citizens comments. We did have one citizen who asked that we do this, and that's, of course, Mrs. Slavin. And she has asked that everybody, you know, cut out hearts and stuff and stick them on their windows, and maybe on their mailbox, and you know, whatever. And just kind of get into it a little bit, maybe. It's not a bad idea. It'll give you something to do while everybody's sitting indoors doing nothing. And, you know, it shows a little bit for the people that have to be out there working. And, you know, for us. So I think it's not a bad idea. So just take it with what she said, so. Board comments. Let's start with Alan.
I sent everybody a list of information today. Lieutenant Governor, we had the usual MMA lieutenant governors meeting, so just, I put it out, so hopefully it'll get out to all the public as well. Derek has, so we can disseminate it as well.
Okay.
And that's about it. It's just what, everybody probably got notification today that the governor extended the shutdown until May 4th. And we'll see whether that gets extended again or not. But that basically shuts everything down up through May 4th.
Okay. Anybody else comments?
I'd like to just say, yeah, this is Jim.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to thank Derek and all the town employees for the great job they're doing during this time. And an individual asked if we could have public comment. And I think when we were talking last night, besides you, Mrs. Slavin, I think at your meeting last night, Patrick, there was a portion for which they could do a public comment period, where the public could call in. Or, so, that's something to consider. Talk with Steve about it. I know, I think they use Microsoft Teams for the school building committee meeting.
Yeah, they do.
Do it here, too. If we want, you know, if we're gonna be doing this for a while, it might be something to consider.
I think it's not a bad idea, Jim, and I'll tell you what we should do. Why don't we just ask the people who have public comments to issue, give them to us before the meeting, and we can read them?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, do that.
So they can, they can just get it to the selectman's office. And if the press would help us with that, get it to the selectman's office, and then we'll read them. That's all. It's easy enough.
I was just, I was wondering if you wanted to do it interactive, that at a portion in the meeting where they could call in, but if you prefer not to? I mean, it's your call.
Well, I mean, technically, we won't respond anyway, so if they give it to us, we can always let everybody know what they had in mind and move on. Go ahead, Alan, I saw your fingers.
You have, if you look at the top bar on the Zoom, there's a thing called chat. We just did it today, actually, with the lieutenant governor, the MMA meeting, where people can actually send something in. They don't speak to you directly, it goes into this chat, you see it. And you can respond to it if you want, or you can send back an answer without doing it verbally. It's in the system, it's all there, it's easy.
Well, we can look into that, too. All right? We'll check into it and see how it goes. All right, anybody else have comments? Board comments? Nope? Okay. Appointments, there's none. We had one permit, but it's not complete, so we're gonna pass it over. So now we're gonna get to vote on articles of 2020 special town meeting. I don't think we really, do we have those? We do have them, but is anybody prepared for that yet? The meeting's gonna be held off for a while.
No, the meeting, the meeting will be held off for a while. I mean, it's, you know, in any event.
At some point, we'll have to vote on these, but.
We will.
Do it right now.
Yeah. I mean, until we know when the meeting is.
Yeah.
You know, it's not necessarily an easy thing to do.
So we'll, we'll just pass that over for now. Go ahead.
It's rich.
The, I've been talking to Claire, we're just waiting on a piece of legislation to get through to figure out what the date is gonna be.
Yeah, I saw that. That's gonna allow it to even go past June 30th, right?
Possibly.
If you had to.
Yeah.
God hopes that we're not gonna be doing this at June 30th, that's all I know. All right, let's get to the town administrator's report. He has been, and you know what? And I have to jump on with Jim. Derek and his people, including the emergency management with Patrick and Board of Health and everybody else, been working real hard, they're paying attention, they're making the things when it's time. And I think they're doing a heck of a job, and we all owe them a great debt of service for what they're doing right now. Remember, they're there all day, every day. I get to speak to him just maybe a few times a day. But, and that's even too much, because he's really busy. But he's doing a great job, and his people are doing a terrific job. And he's trying to keep everybody self-safe, and I think we all owe him a great deal of service, so.
Make him a heart.
Make him a heart.
Thank you, that's very kind of everyone. We have a, we have a great team working. It's including the two districts where Hammond and Onset Fire and the police. So every morning, we have a conference call at 10:00 a.m. We, sometimes we have to move it, because I gotta tell you, the conference calls are all over the place right now, for just multiple ones from the state to the, down to the South Coast Hospital Group. We've obviously been in contact with them, trying to, trying to figure out and link what's going on. So I really appreciate it. Patrick McDonald, Bob Eathier, you know, doing a fantastic job, so. Whole bunch of people on there. And all of them just being out in the streets, they're the ones that are, that are doing it every day, so we appreciate it. Just wanted to give you a heads up on what we're doing with some of the staffing at Town Hall. We've moved to most offices to essentially two teams, an A-team and a B-team. So part of that is trying, if we have one person get sick or becoming symptomatic, and if they're going into self-quarantine, we can still continue operations with the other staff. So we've been doing that with, with a lot of the departments. Obviously, you can't do that with police or Fire. So we're getting a lot of employees. It's a stressful time for them. They have family at home, they have loved ones that they're concerned about, so I appreciate all their hard work as well. Jim had mentioned something to me about volunteers, and he pointed out something that I just completely overlooked, which was the recycling center was still operating. We spoke to them today, they're a little sad about it, but we are, we are asking them to shut down and everyone to use the, use the regional refuse disposal district areas. So just so everybody that's listening, we're not shutting down the trash. It's just the recycling center off of Maple Springs Road. And please do not leave your recycling at the gate. That was their big concern. You know, the, the COA is doing a fantastic job with the Meals on Wheels program, and we're offering up for some of our employees to be drivers. And they asked for, for a couple folks to be in at about 8:15 in the morning to lift up some big coolers to bring them out to the car. So I'm gonna try and get down there a little earlier, see if we can't help out. But they're doing a fantastic job. And as today's press release stated, we're using Old Colony Elder Services, and anybody that wants to volunteer, they can use, they have to call there to do it. The town does the criminal background check on folks, and sometimes that can take a while, just if there's some records. But it's Old Colony Elder Services that actually does the initial work. And just going through, we're gonna have to take a look at the 2021 budget. We're going back over that. We know there'll be reductions in state aid. Right now, what we're hearing is there's no 9C cuts for this fiscal year, which is, which is excellent. We don't have to worry about that. We're obviously not going to expend the remainder of free cash on capital items and such. We may need those for operating. And we're, we're looking at what to project for loss of revenue. Obviously, things like Hotel, Motel Xize, we could lose our biggest quarters here, going from spring into summer, and a couple other. We know that the, some folks may not be able to pay some of their tax bills, and they're, you know, and I think that's something we need to bring up to the board. The legislation's not done yet to push out the tax bills. I believe it's to June 1. I think it was to push it out.
Correct.
Yeah, the May 1st was gonna be June 1.
Yeah. So I think I'd recommend that we do do that if it comes through, so. You know, I'd like to take the temperature of the board, so we don't have to worry about it. As soon as it passes, we can get the word out.
Oh, I totally agree.
I agree, and you know what? For the people who can't afford to pay, it's easier for the operations of the town if you just go ahead and pay on the due date, if it's not an issue for you. So, I mean, but for the people who do have an issue, a couple more months, you know, hopefully that'll be enough time for them to get the federal stimulus money, get that actually, a check in hand, you know, and at least, you know, be in a better position to pay it a couple months down the road.
And everyone should understand as well that that's for your real estate taxes. Your excise taxes have already been due. But what we're not doing at this time on the excise taxes that are passed due, we're not doing the demands or warrants, which tack on fees. So we're holding off on that, so trying to help people out.
Sorry, if I could interrupt. For those, you know, who don't know what that is, that's if you pay, you know, you get progressively different colored letters from the treasurer collector if you don't pay. Each time you get one of those letters, you get whacked another, you know, 30 bucks or whatever. So that's not something, you know, you necessarily want to ignore anyway, but, but that's what's being waived, is the subsequent billing being sent out. The flip side of that is, don't forget to pay the bill, because you're still, we're still, we still under law have to collect interest on them.
Yeah. The interest is still.
It's automatic, we don't, we don't, you know, that, that just happens.
So, we understand our, a lot of our residents are, as we've said, either working seniors or in some of the trades, and, you know, obviously, it's the hospitality industry that's hit hardest in this. So we're trying to work with everybody, but we still need to run our operations as well. So I'm concerned about FY '21, and I'm going to amend the revenues, which, which will amend the total budget. Goal, obviously, is not to lay anyone off at this point, but we're just gonna have to go through the projections to see that.
Well, you know, this is the time when we will probably start thinking of dipping into the stabilization fund, I'm sure, in order to get us tied through this. And thank God that you, we've done such a good job of keeping that and keeping the money in there to try and try to get through, help to get through something like this, you know? It's, it's, it's to your credit, to everybody's credit.
We have a rainy day fund for a reason.
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah, it is the rainy day.
And it's definitely raining.
It's pouring, man.
It's pouring, it's pouring. So, anything else, Derek?
Yeah, no, I would actually, if I could hear from the board, I know it's obviously not an agenda item, but I could give Mr. Foster direction on this, because we anticipate that legislation to, to pass, so.
Well, I think we can talk about this under the emergency order without any problem whatsoever. So I would, I would say, everybody's welcome to tone in, I'm in favor of it, so.
I am, too.
Yeah, I am, too.
I'd make a motion that we go ahead and vote, okay? Motion, go ahead and allow the change.
Yeah, depending on the legislation's approval.
Motion by Alan, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. So there you go, Derek, you're all set.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, helps us out.
Oh, no, you just, the people deserve everything we can do for them at this point. I mean, you know, we, you know, we're kind of have tunnel vision when it comes to the town. And, you know, we don't realize how much we play a role in people's lives every single day, you know?
Yeah, it takes an event like this for us all to understand it, and for the people to understand what, what can be done at the local level. And that's really, this pandemic is, you know, really is, is at the local level, the residents that are gonna make the difference in this, you know? Yeah, changing that curve, if you will. So I appreciate all their help, our residents are fantastic, and they've really been working well with us, so.
Okay, I wish you would, I wish you would mention why we're here and while it's the press and everybody are here. There's been a lot of people posting stuff up that is really fake news, and they're making up stories, and they're putting stuff up there. But what they don't realize is, when we hear that stuff, we have to jump through hoops to try to figure out whether it's real, or it isn't real, or whatever. And it's taking up the time of our emergency management people when they need to be doing other stuff. So I wanted to address that.
Yeah, yeah, we did that in today's press release, but it's, you know, obviously, people are trying to help each other and get information out, but in striving to do that and being the first one to get it out, it's a little bit of the wrong information there was. So what happens is, not only do we have to respond, but we receive multiple calls on it. And we're responding and trying to check. We are, we have a public health nurse, we have another one that we're contracting with. And at this point, even trying to get some of the school nurses in to help us as well. You know, they can obviously do it from home. We have to track all of these down. And if we're tracking these down that are, you know, I don't, that are faults, if you will, and it may have come from the best intentions, it really slows us down in being responsive to the actual cases, so. If you think there's something that we should know, the Board of Health should know. I have their phone number right here. Hold on for a moment. Please call them at 508-291-3100, extension 3197. It's best to reach out to them, and so as if you have a concern, rather, I gotta tell you, posting on Facebook isn't gonna help anyone at this point, so.
Right.
I appreciate it. That being said, you know, please check, check on your friends, family, neighbors, anything you can do. And people, just because they're seniors doesn't mean they're not online either. So that's, it's a great resource to reach out and connect, but please think before you post.
Okay, next will be liaison reports, and Alan, I'll start with you.
Okay, everybody's got the list of stuff I sent out today?
Actually, Patrick, I had some 48-hour business.
Oh, okay, what do you got? Go ahead.
Yeah. You know, I think it was on Friday or it was last week, the governor of Rhode Island, you know, set up checkpoints for people coming in from New York into Rhode Island. So they were stopping drivers and informing them that Rhode Island wanted them to undertake voluntary, you know, 14-day quarantines, because they were coming from the region that right now has the most level of contagion in the world with this disease. And, you know, she later amended her order to include everybody. I know the governor of New York was very upset about that. I know some civil libertarians are very upset about that. But the, the overall effect of what she is doing there is benefiting us here. Because we have, we have the same, you know, issues here as far as the quarantine. I'm sure her state troopers and National Guards people are telling people, and if you're going through to Massachusetts, Governor Baker wants you to quarantine for 14 days as well. So, you know, people have raised some constitutional issues with this, whether, whether it's, you know, should be done, there's talks of court challenges. What I would like this board to do is authorize our chairman to send the governor a letter saying that in the event there is litigation against the state of Rhode Island relating to their stopping and advising people, that we would request the governor, through the attorney general, to have Massachusetts intervene as an interested party in that case, meaning we would be, you know, supporting Rhode Island as active participants in the litigation. I think, I think it's important when our neighboring state, you know, does this, and does so at the risk, you know, some controversy, but they do it also to our benefit, that we support her as well.
Okay, comments? Go ahead, Alan.
We need to double-check that I believe Rhode Island backed off, actually.
They didn't back off, Alan, what they did is they're checking everybody.
Yeah.
Everybody without a state plates is getting checked, everybody is being told to quarantine. The only, the change that she made, Alan, the change that, I checked this as of today, the change that she made was to stop all out-of-state vehicles coming in.
Understand, what the governor's already put in place, anybody coming in from certain areas has to voluntarily quarantine themselves. I have, we have people in Florida that wanna come up, and they basically know that they don't have to quarantine themselves 14 days from the day they actually get back to Mass, that's day zero. That's already in there.
That's fine, but, but not all travelers know this, and as I, as, what I'm saying is, I think we should stand with Rhode Island as they try to protect everybody.
I don't have a problem.
Independent of our effort, Alan, I think we need to support it.
I don't have a problem either way, I just wanna make it clear that they are vacillating a lot.
Anybody else comments? Jim?
Go ahead, Mary, what are you saying?
I, I don't, I, I mean, I, I see why she's doing it, I just, I, I don't know how I feel about this still. I'm still very torn. If I had a home somewhere else, and I wanted to go there to get out of a hot zone, who the hell's gonna stop me?
Well, nobody stopped, nobody's stopping you for more than 30 seconds, I guess.
Yeah, I just, I don't know how I feel about it still. I'm still, that's something I'm, I'm a little torn over.
Well. Jim?
I think as long as you get the message out there and ask people to exercise good judgment, and if they are coming in from, you know, people have time off, so maybe they're just coming in from, you know, to utilize their, their other home. And it doesn't mean that they're, you know, carrying COVID-19 or symptomatic or anything. So, you know, just ask them, you know, if they're coming in from areas that, that they, you know, practice, you know, they exercise good judgment, and do the same that would be requested at the home and self-quarantine. I mean, just, I understand if you're in a hot zone, that it's probably not good to, to go somewhere else and to spread the, with the possibility of spreading COVID-19. But, but as Mary's saying, on the other hand, if it's their choice to wanna, you know, get out of there and go to their home, I think they have that, that freedom. And until we, as a state, you know, make the decision that, you know, you can't come into the state, or, you know, all we're doing is asking them to self-quarantine. So as long as you get the notice out there, I think we're fine. That's all.
I mean, I think we're kind of talking past each other here. This isn't an issue of whether we're gonna let people into our state or not, or whether Rhode Island is preventing people from coming into our state. It's the fact that Rhode Island is performing an informational service that benefits us that's potentially under attack from people who don't like it. And, you know, by supporting Rhode Island in doing so, you know, you're not saying to people, you can't come here. You're basically using Rhode Island as your advance agent to let people know of exactly what you were talking about, Jim. Yep, please quarantine when you get to Massachusetts. If they, if they're passing that message along, I think we should support them. But that's what I was, that's why I was bringing this up.
Anybody else?
It's important to know, it was announced tonight by Governor Baker, but that hotels and short-term rentals like Airbnb may no longer be booked for vacation or leisure purposes. They have to be used for emergency purposes as well.
That, that goes up through May 4th.
Really?
Yes. So that's, we know that at one point, Chatham was the most booked, sorry, Airbnb spot in the nation. They were really focusing ahead of time, so, you know, and I understand that people have a right to go different places, especially the homes they own. There is some concern, and they need to have some consideration what they could be bringing along with them in self-quarantine. So having a layer before us, I think, is beneficial.
Yeah, I think it's beneficial, too. And you can easily see, you know, the reason why a lot of the people from New York and Connecticut and other places came to their summer homes is because they're pretty well locked down there. Remember, theirs was not a order of, you know, this is an advisory. Theirs was shelter in place, which means it's mandatory. And so, you know, they just wanted to get out of there, and I get it. You know, why, you know, they can go to their other house, and they don't have to live under that kind of, that kind of whatever some people think is tyranny. But this is an unusual situation, and this calls for unusual measures. And what people don't understand is, when these measures are taken, and the quicker we take them, and the faster we get it, and the, and the, and the more we pay attention to it, the quicker we'll be over this, we won't have to do this anymore. You know, but I don't know that everybody gets that. But I, I don't have a problem with giving Rhode Island our support at all. But it's up to you guys. Somebody wanna make a motion, I'll write the letter, it's up to you.
I'll, I'll make the motion, and if it gets seconded, I guess, you know, we go from there, and if not, it, you know, was an idea. I move that we authorize the chairman to send a letter to the governor and the attorney general asking them to intervene on behalf of Massachusetts in any action against Rhode Island, keeping us safe.
Do I hear a second?
Um, I'll, I'll second it. I mean, this is all hypothetical stuff. Everyone's gonna be suing everyone, and we're all pointing who brought it here, who brought it there, so. We're all gonna end up with it. It's coming. You can try and keep it off the Cape, but it's gonna be there. It's already there.
It's there, yeah.
All right, I'll second it.
Well, thanks, it is better before the bridge is married.
Is there any more discussion?
I just, go ahead, Alan, please.
Go ahead, Alan.
I'm gonna probably not vote for it at this time, because the governor has been, basically has come out against me. You know, he had, he basically told people, basically, you're coming from out of state to here, you need to quarantine yourself for 14 days, you know? And at this particular point in time, I'm not comfortable doing this.
Okay, Jim?
So basically, all we're saying is that someone takes action against.
Rhode Island.
Federal government, or we support their effort to stop them and to give them a, give, give people coming through a notice that we're requesting that you self-quarantine. That's a storm, correct?
Exactly.
So.
And what, what do you believe? That's a violation of their, their civil liberties, or?
No, I think it's not a violation of their civil liberties in an emergency. I wanna support Rhode Island in this effort if they do get sued. And again, that's if.
I don't want, I don't want part of the suit.
You know, I don't know the legality of it, so.
Okay. Well, we have, so, well, we have town council away a little bit. All right.
Thanks, Alan.
I do my best, boy, whenever I can.
Usually, I get to say, thanks, Jim. Well.
I'm surprised, he usually raises his hand. Well, he's scratching the dog right now.
Here's the situation. As it was originally taking shape, it looked like one of those European movies from the 30s, where some guy stops and says, papers, please, and you get turned away or sent here or there. It's moved away from that. And the reason why it's moved away from that is because of the commerce clause of the Constitution, and you can't interfere with interstate travel. And so when that was pointed out to certain governors, what they did was they changed their approach, and they changed it from what was starting to look like, yeah, we're gonna stop these people, make them turn around or detain them, to we're gonna stop some people who appear to be on the road traveling through, and let them know that if they're stopping in our state, then they should quarantine themselves for 14 days. So it's not the more sinister-looking thing that started to develop. At this point, you know, if I'm understanding Peter's motion correctly, all you'd be asking the governor to do, or the attorney general to do, be, if Rhode Island gets sued for some commerce clause violation, that the Massachusetts would express its support for the notice, notification actions being taken by Rhode Island.
Exactly. Yes, that's it in a nutshell.
Yeah. Well, is it, is what Rhode Island, is what it's doing now lawful? As far as I can tell, do we put ourselves in legal jeopardy by expressing support or expressing disapproval? Either way, it's just an opinion. So I think you're free to do what you want.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Right, motion made by Peter, seconded by Mary. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, so three to two, it passes, so we'll send that out.
Well, you didn't ask them to, you didn't ask them if they were saying no.
Yeah, hey, Patrick, probably do a roll call on some of these.
Yeah, I probably should, huh?
Yeah, it is remote, right? Yeah.
Let's, actually, in this case, let's do a roll call.
You have to do a roll call anyways.
Yeah, remote, you gotta, yeah.
Yeah, Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Alan? No. No?
No.
Okay, Jim?
No.
Okay, me, yes, so again, it's three to two, so we will send the letter.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next, we're moving on to liaison reports and Alan, you get to start first.
Okay, just a few things for the public to know, hopefully the newspaper will pick up on it, uh, what's the circumstances is being modified, so we took, you know, the COVID-19 website from the state or the MMA to see what's changing, uh, it's important because it has, you know, on who can be open or wet. We'll do, right?
Alan, you're kinda faded a little bit.
Alan, use the mic.
Sorry.
Yeah, you're breaking up.
There is, it shouldn't be, unless there's something coming through elsewhere.
You're good now.
I'm good for a minute anyways.
Keep going.
Always being optimistic, Alan.
Keep going, Alan.
Look, you gotta figure out, some days it's better than others, there's, there's also an issue about, uh, people who are, are exposed to the virus, who are what we call, you know, first responders and critical municipal employees, there's, the, the state is gonna bring forth some guidelines of what we do, that.
Yeah, Alan, stuff, that's the, um, that's for employee, employee benefit, why do we say it? I can't hear him.
No, neither can I.
He froze.
Yeah, you did.
All right, so why don't we move on to?
You can, you can get me. You're frozen, Alan.
I swear to God I had nothing to do with it.
There you go, you're back. Okay, it's gonna be on your end, cause I'm not frozen here at all.
No, I think it's, Alan, it's a combo of the moving, when you're moving and try and speak at the same time.
Yeah, you gotta stay put. Okay. Breathe.
Usually not a problem for you, is it?
Breathe in place.
Okay, just let people know that April 20th is still a state holiday, there's questions whether that would be a holiday or not, and, uh, there's information coming down in the stabilization funds that you can use for actually essential services, we need to watch that, you wanna watch Bill, House Bill 4598, all the things you're asking about coming through on that bill.
Okay. All right, uh, John, Peter?
The dog's not letting me do it.
Okay.
Go to Mary and I'll let her out.
Jim?
I wanna, uh, use my time to, to ask, uh, Mr. Sullivan, um, regarding, um, the, uh, stabilization fund and free cash, stabilization fund is five and a half percent, if I'm correct, and what do we have for, um, free cash?
Free cash, we still have about one, one and a quarter million.
And what percentage of our budget would that break down to?
Maybe two, two percent, one, one and three quarters.
And, and you generally, when you do the budget, you, you, um, approach it at 10% of, uh, less than the previous years, or?
No, that's 10% is for the, um, local receipts.
Okay, and will a lot of what's getting spent be reimbursed by, um, the federal government?
You can get 75%, some others up to 100, but that could take about four or five years to get that money.
Wow, wow.
So.
Okay, well, well, thank you, I just, I was, I was wondering, uh, how that was gonna work and what would be able to get back, and that would only be for expenditures associated with the actual, uh, additional costs related to the pandemic, correct?
Yeah, great, event, event-related costs, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Derek, one of the bills going through would allow us to amortize our costs over a couple of fiscal years, so, that's something to be watching for.
Yeah, originally they were going, they did just one fiscal year, but seeing that our greatest impact could be for 2021, um, allowing it spread out over the next couple of years would be, would be fantastic, so.
Yeah, the actual number is three, yes. Okay, all right, anybody, any, uh, Mary, you have anything?
Nope.
Okay, so I was at a building committee, uh, meeting, uh, for the school and, uh, a couple of things went on this, first off, they can continue to build over there, uh, the, the state has blessed it and they are gonna continue to, to keep working on the site and keep going forward, um, so everybody knows that that's gonna happen, I believe that they, uh, they, the, the, um, the groundbreaking ceremony as such is not gonna happen as it would normally have happened, um, although I think they're going to send, uh, WCTV's probably gonna go over and do some filming over there, I heard, just to give, uh, and a- ask some of the, the questions and stuff and, and kinda put it on the air, which will be helpful, but they're thinking, trying to plan something sometime in June, and this is only if by then everything is cleared, of having a more of an event over there where, uh, uh, people from the community can come to and, uh, everybody can go and sort of have, instead of a necessarily groundbreaking, some kind of ceremony, uh, they were talking about taking a beam down and letting people sign it, stuff like that, uh, like that to make it part of the community so that everybody can feel and buy into it and be part of, uh, of the new school, and I thought that was certainly a better thing, they wanted to try to have a groundbreaking, but that just can't happen, um, you know, uh, it just, uh, it's just impossible, we've gotta set the example and, uh, you know, not gather, obviously we're not here, I mean, we're not in our rooms, we're here on the video for a reason, and part of that is to show an example to everybody else in what they should be doing, and so unfortunately, that won't happen, but it'll, it should be nice to have a little event with, with other people and stuff like that, they've done it before, um, and you know who actually came up with that was Rhonda, and, uh, Rhonda said that she's been involved in stuff like that in the past, and she was, uh, she, uh, I think she's gonna be working on that, so, I think that'll be a, a fun thing for everybody when it, when it finally happens, uh, I don't know that it'll happen in June, might be August, might be September, we'll have to see what happens, uh, by then, if we're still in, still in lockdown, people will be foaming at the mouth to get out, when the time comes, everybody will probably show up to the event, you know? So, but, uh, that's what happened and, uh, you know, they're still moving forward, uh, we're, uh, we're in pretty good shape, uh, as far as the dollars and cents go, um, the SBA is, uh, we're right on target with those guys, and so, uh, everything's moving along and I just want everybody to have an update on that.
Yeah, Pat- Patrick, would I, would I ask, um, at the next meeting, maybe I'll send Chad something, can they loop John Foster in on everything?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make sure that that happens.
Borrowing's a little bit, borrowing's a little bit more difficult at this time, so.
Well, send me, uh, send me his, um, his, uh, where he wants it sent to, and I will have Chad send it there, that same stuff, he, I get all the, all the stuff, uh, every committee member now gets all of the bills, everything.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's really good because, you know, it's nice that everybody gets to look at stuff so that they, if they have a question, they can ask it, I mean, after all, everybody's signing off on it, and by the way, all of us are really signing off on it because we're signing the bands, just so you know.
Yeah.
And, uh, so it behooves us to pay attention to this, you know, it is a $90 million project, so, uh, you know, not that there'd be any issues, but it's nice to be able to feel comfortable anyway.
Yeah, I, I think we might be holding off going to the market and doing some, uh, short-term and potentially statehouse notes at this time.
Yeah, that's fine.
There has.
However you wanna handle it, I mean, I'm sure Mr. Foster, he's pretty good at that, you're pretty good at that, so I'm sure we'll come up with the, whatever will save us the lea- the most amount of money, I'm sure.
All right.
All right, so.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, moving on to consent agenda, I think we have a set of minutes.
We do, we have, we have a set of minutes from, um, March 3rd and we were all present, so I moved.
Uh, I wasn't. March 3rd, I was working the, uh, polls at the primary.
Yep, you were not here, sorry, it does say not present right next to your name.
Write it in there, write it in there, initials, we're good to go.
Oh, it says that, it says it.
Okay.
It does say you weren't present.
Could you please put working the polls? I'd like to have that on the.
Uh, yep, I will.
So, motion.
So, what do you say, is stay away from Title Bomb, he's, uh, he's Corona positive here or what?
Whatever, whatever floats your boat, Peter.
All right, so there's a motion by Mary to approve the March 3rd, 2020 minutes, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Jim, any discussion? All in favor, say aye, oh, no, wait a minute, roll call, um, Jim?
Yes, aye.
Uh, Alan?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, uh, Peter?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay, so, 4-0-1. All right, so that's it, all right, so that brings us to the end of the meeting, I just wanna remind everybody at home, please stay home as much as you possibly can, when you go out to the stores or whatever, please make sure you, uh, wash your hands consistently, that you try not to bring anything home for yourself and, uh, save, stay as safe as you possibly can, and remember that, uh, if you don't follow the, the, the plan, uh, and you become the people that don't wanna listen when they put rules and stuff in place, you'll not only probably get the virus and get sick, but you'll also make it so that all the rest of us are still tied into our houses many months from now, so let's pay attention, please. Anybody else? All right, motion to adjourn would be appropriate.
So moved.
Motion made by Peter, what happened, Alan?
I'm doing some other stuff.
He's on the phone.
Second by Jim, all right, roll call, uh, Peter?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, okay, have a great week, we're am.
Thank you.